Or add it.
Should be good.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
I think there are a lot of things that you wrote out there. I just, I missed a lot of these. I just wanted to know if that's upon the coaching committee. Did anything involve some of that or what was the summary?
Yeah, I think that would be a good question to follow up with. Darren, follow. Yeah. Okay. Is there anybody else that's on that sheet?
I didn't look.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I didn't know there was one out there.
Perfect.
Hi, so my name is Michelle Vassachik. I am the elementary secretary at the three building. And I was fortunate enough to represent the secretary group in the classified board. So I want to thank the board members who were a part of that and allowing us to come in and to represent ourselves and to see, you know, increase in benefits and that sort of thing. While I do appreciate that, I do think our new approach to it left us feeling a little bit uncertain and quite where we wanted to be at the end. We have staff that have been here for well over 20 years and now their salary is kept. And there is longevity, but in the end it doesn't quite meet the cost of living increase. They're feeling very frustrated. And we just ask that as the negotiations made it look different, if it looks different next year, that we all have the same expectations or know how the process will work ahead of time so that we can feel more prepared than what we did. I think we would come away feeling better. And that would help all of us. The other part that is a little uncomfortable is with the implementation of the ESSP, which is by the state. It does make a difference for us and now that the snow days that we had, which means like not a big deal, but the three days that we did have are being taken away. We can still use our sick time for that. But this has been a benefit that is not guaranteed every year, of course, because some years we don't have a snow day. One snow day. But this has been something that has been going on for well over 25 years. So you can only imagine how the employees feel when something like that has been taken. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And they're young.
Some of you, some of you do not. I am a 21th year freshman at the school. I've been here for 10 years. And also just kind of want to reiterate what Michelle had to say as far as, thank you for sitting with us and allowing us to share our feelings, for allowing us to feel heard. I think there are still some concerns that were left, I don't know, maybe unanswered as far as the process. As far as I went in feeling like we were playing a game of Uno, but at the end I found out we were playing Go Fish and I didn't have the same cards in my hand as everyone else. I have had a really difficult time with the decisions that were made. I take this very, personally, I take it to heart. I want to do what's best for all of the staff and as we all do. I know difficult decisions have to be made as far as finances and what the district cannot afford. But in going forward, I just hope there's a little bit more clarity. I hope that there's a little bit more understanding of the process from both parties and that we come together in a way and that we're all feeling like we understood. I know there were some questions that were asked that evening that I left feeling unanswered. And when I reached out for clarity, there were, well, I'll check on that for you, which is an acceptable answer to me. I always like to have my gaps in a row. I like to know that I'm giving someone the correct answer first. But my interpretation of what was being offered and the person doing the offering's interpretation were in the end two different things, which left me feeling like I feel a little bit in my position representing the rest of the staff. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into information. So we have the principals' reports. John's not here. That throws it. Wow. Okay, Clark.
First.
It's you.
Just I included many things in the board report, just one thing I'll talk about is MCA testing always is now. We start a week from the date with the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade reading. Lots of tests for the next month. Technology is up to date. All the iPads have updated that version of the state level. We're ready, so that's a big part of the next month. Thank you.
Mike?
I would like to add two things that aren't in my report right here that goes over the MCA. Just a reminder on the MCA schedule and just a few things about the handbook and so forth. But Tony McGee has been a big part of getting a mobile science lab. Pretty sure that's through Southeast Service. That enables us to have a lot of supplies or kids to use a lot of supplies and maybe wouldn't if it was just us. So that's a really good positive thing that he's done. And of course, he brings it here for about two weeks every year. It's just a really good extra thing and a good reason why we're a part of just one of many, why we're a part of that organization. And then the other thing is last week, our ag department had student-led classes and shows for our elementary kids. They came up to the high school, went into the ag department and had kids find some activities and some learning for the younger kids. It was just kind of a cool, cool thing to see to step into. All our kids getting involved in something like that. Two things that I just want on my report.
Your board report.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. So the student council has its last event of the year next month, and that will be our Do Something Different Day, which will be May 1st, which is very exciting. We haven't done this since last year's graduates were freshmen. So it's been a little bit, but I'm really excited to bring it back and kind of end the year on a high note. The teachers have been super, super helpful in getting that going with us. But that'll be our last thing. It'll be sad to be done, but also very exciting. Next year's president is a fantastic girl, but also it'll be really good to see what they do. But for now, we're just excited to finish this year out strong. Yeah.
Very good. Shout out to all the amazing activities you guys have done this year. Good. Maintenance report is attached. Along with a community education report. And board members, if you have any questions about any of these eventually. Budget report.
Report's attached. And I can take any questions if there's any. It's tracking where we wanted to. I just want to point out that top line there for district-wide revenues, this first page here, our revenue. That report is, we received the money in for the solar grants for schools of $194,000. We have not yet paid that out because that just came in. So that top number there is skewed a little by the fact that that's money that needs to go back to that program. And then, and they'll be in. Bottom line, though, we're tracking where we want to. We're working hard on getting budget numbers. Just got some more updated reports from state last week, so that'll be helpful in our budget process as we continue to work on with that. Everybody have any questions?
There you go. Superintendent's report.
Sure, for the enrollment numbers, I'll let Marsha pull that up. Basically, we're very close to being exactly flat. Scroll over, we'll see that our budget number that we had changed to was 1415, and so we're at 1423, just as you're referencing there, right? So it's good to be above what our budget had, and that will be a good sign for us going forward when we look at the end of the year, so. But that's our adjusted budget. Budget number was 1415, we're at 1423, so solid there.
Good. Committee reports. H. Ben, here. Southeast Service Co., or Monica, anything? Personnel negotiations, anything? Staff development, meet and confer, transportation facilities are all attached. Anything to add to those? And board fights is also attached. Consent agenda.
Vote to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Jake, a second by Monica. Any further conversation as part of that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to governance, personnel, there is none. We have some donations to accept, it looks like. That wizard's still in the foresight bank. We have a motion to vote to approve. Motion by Monica, second by Jake. Heart. Conversation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Well, we don't see those donate, some of the donations that have come into our district, not district, but to parents, the parents that are leading the post-prom activity. Have raised a lot of money in a short amount of time for great things for our kids. So I just want to give that shout out. Well, it's not part of the district. Amazing things are happening. Pay equity report.
So we're required to complete a pay equity report or analysis to the state. And when we do that, in essence, what it is, is taking a look that there's equity in pay between male and female classes. And so it goes through and using a job point system based on the level of responsibility that the state sets up. Then it analyzes each position that we have employee group in the district. Then by that assigned point, looks at what we have for pay in that. And so with that, it's really there to make sure that there's no compensation disadvantage for female. And so we've passed that. So this is the report for you to approve it. All the information's been entered into the system, so once you take action tonight, then we will pass it. And we passed the comparison between female and male classes and also passed the exceptional pay service, which determines if there's inequity in the percentage of jobs, including pay and the longevity pieces also. So it's a good thing to make sure that we're done with and have it taken care of.
Very good.
Vote to approve.
Motion by Jake, second by Roger. Any conversation or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have some items here for first reading, student handbooks.
So each of the student handbooks are there for you. Again, it's first reading. So if there are questions, just make sure that the building principals can answer those and get through with those. And I don't know if you guys want to touch base on anything there or not. But we'll do the second reading next month.
Okay. And then we'll vote after that. Good. Facility use policy, first reading also.
And so this comes from the Transportation of Facilities Committee because the main item here is the increase in fees. Really, in essence, to try to get closer to covering the operating costs when facility is used by outside groups. And that's really the biggest deal is just that these rates are extremely old, having been set many years ago. And it was time to just to take a look and see what this was. So there was quite a bit of discussion at the committee meeting about this and what it looked like. So this is the new fee structure. The other pieces continue to be the same in terms of the classifications and stuff, but the areas of what they're in in the new facility. Again, this is just a first reading. Certainly Roger, Stacy can speak to it as well, but from a committee perspective, it would matter a lot. We have so many people here at these events that the cost of supplies, materials, even just getting rid of garbage and dumpster expenses have gone up that we need to make sure that we made some adjustments for that. Second reading will come next.
Do we know how we are in comparison to like other districts as far as those fees go?
Many of the other districts' fees are as old as ours. So I will say that there's probably going to be some shifting going around, all the way around. I know it's been a topic, discussion of a couple of superintendents that I've talked with. And that original policy, I remember when it first came in, we kind of all did it together. Your policy was just like other districts.
Run center. Read Act.
So the Read Act. With this, just in terms of what's been shared, both publicly at our information meeting as well as presentations to you as a board previously, having gone through that and having discussion at the building levels as well as the staff development committee, the feeling right now is that we would recommend to you as a board to move forward with the letters training for this first phase. Second phase may be different, but this first phase will be to move forward with letters training. And I just have to say that I'm really glad that that's the choice that is made because it's definitely the most rigorous and most demanding. And so we're going to need to make sure we provide time for our staff to do that, but I think it's the best outcome, especially when we're talking about reading. Especially this phase one, preschool and elementary. So just really am glad for that. Say that that's our recommendation to you as a board. We would still need to figure out exactly what the calendar would be like. What we've talked about is 16 half-days or late starts and try to figure out what that would look like so that those sessions can happen. And there needs to be a little bit of time between those, so you wouldn't do those every week, but like every other week. So you'd have a chance to go through the training, a chance to implement it, put it in practice, and then be able to be ready for the next section. And there would still need to be, I believe, four more additional full days that we would need to find. But we're talking administratively, like what that would look like and are there ways to work with what we have currently on the calendar? As well as, are there ways for us to talk about, can we bring students in those days? What would that look like? Definitely different from building to building. So that's why I just say that's an ongoing discussion to try to figure out what that might really look like.
So it sounds like we would need a motion to move forward with the letters training? If that is what we would agree on?
And if you have other questions, happy days.
How do you make the motion? Motion by Monica, second by Roger. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. To say I'm pretty excited about that.
Yeah, I thank you for that support, and I think it's important for us to find the time for staff. So I think that would be great.
Do we think that the calendar could be worked out by next board meeting?
I think we can get pretty close to that. I mean, because we really want to. We really want to get that figured out as, I mean, as we can. As staff development has been talking about, what do we do on our days during preschool workshop days? Do we use some of that time? So I think we can get a pretty good idea of what it's going to be. But I don't know that we'll nail down the four full days because that really is dependent upon the vendor who's providing the training. What they say can give us, so. But we'll certainly have more for you on the calendar next week.
Classified salary and benefits handbook.
Sure, so we can go through this. So it's again a strike through with italics being the new. We went through and made some adjustments in terms of terminology because we had 10-month, 11-month, and we just really said, all right, so these are secretaries. These are paraprofessionals. Identified that the district sets the work calendar, the number of days, and the typical number of days for the different secretary positions. And then for the paraprofessionals, that it's a seven-and-a-half-hour day. Again, the district sets the calendar of days that work. So that's the changes for job classification. The benefits part, and the benefits are eligible if an employee works more than 20 hours per week. The holidays that are there, we changed just in terms of, again, just noting that this is for secretaries. This is for pares. We didn't change any of the holidays themselves. The health insurance, there's change there in the language in that what was in this handbook was really brief and didn't contain as much information as what's in the teacher's master agreement. Though we pulled the information that applies equally to teachers as to classified staff and put the same language. So now we have consistency across those two, so we can take a look at that. So as an example, now it specifically says that the district contribution is based off the 3200 HSA plan. So that part is noted in there. That part is, again, is just exactly the same. It talks specifically to the single coverage and family coverage of, for the single coverage, $7,717 per year as the contribution, and the family contribution for each employee is $16,907. So that's the piece that's there. Again, that matches exactly out of the teacher's agreement as well, so we have the same information or consistency. So our dental and vision, again, same thing, where we pulled in more information so folks that are employees can look at this and really know more about their benefits. So they'll know that the benefit comes, when it comes, the timeline, those types of things. So there's additional information. And again, match that right to the teacher's agreement. Life insurance, now this is where it gets to be a little different between the two groups, between the secretaries and the pares. The secretary group, the life insurance changes from $25,000 a year to $75,000. Coverage there. So that's a difference for the secretarial group with that life insurance section. For leaves, this is where the earned safe and sick time comes in, and this is, this is new by the legislature, and it affects all employees. So it doesn't matter union, non-union, principal, teacher, para, it doesn't matter. This applies to all employees and employers, so with very few exceptions. And so if you work 80 hours in a year, then you're entitled to safe and sick time. And it's an hour for every 30 hours that you work, up to 48 hours in a year. So because we as a district already provide a greater benefit in terms of time of leave than what ESST requires, that's not a problem for us. We also aren't reducing down just to meet that minimum, right? So the district is providing more than what's required there, but, and that's a good thing. So, but there are specific pieces to this that the legislature has, the earned safe and sick time that can be used for, that list right there of an employee's mental, physical illness, mental treatment, those types of things. The family members as well, domestic abuse, sexual assault, those things. The fourth bullet, closure of an employee's workplace due to weather and public emergency, or closure of their family member's school or care facility due to weather or public emergency. That's from the legislature and ESST time. That's where some of the confusion that you heard about earlier this evening comes in, right? Where folks feel like, well, shoot, we've had this before. As a benefit, these three days have been paid without counting in terms of leave. Well, now with ESST, that's a requirement. As a district, you have to provide that. So now that counts as part of the leave for ESST time. So that's a disadvantage in that way. The other way of thinking about that is fourth, fifth, sixth, whatever, snow day, those are also going to be paid all the time. It doesn't matter how many because of ESST. So on one hand, it's a loss. On one hand, it's a gain. I mean, you can look at it different ways, but that's what the legislature has in place. So that's not a piece that we have control over there. So the sick leave part, when we go down to there, 15 days per year, so maximum of 190 are reached. Personal leave, I don't know that we made changes in personal leave until we get to the secretaries portion. No, I'm sorry, this is in both. There was a limit of maximum five days of paid time off to be taken at one time. There was a limit there. Now that says unless approved by the building principal. So if there was someone that wanted to take more than five days in a row, as long as they had building principal approval, they could do so. So that's a change in the personal leave there. Agreement, family leave. There's kind of a. Severance and retirement. So you see the severance section completely eliminated, and that's because that was old language, and we don't actually have any employees that fit that description. Because that's old language that was only to former Plainview District employees. So that part, we might as well eliminate. So we're deleting that part because we literally don't have any employees left from that that fit into that category. Under retirement, the change there that is of note is that employees working a minimum of 15 years for the district, at least 55 years of age, were eligible for continued medical insurance coverage and district contribution to their premiums. And so that's a huge benefit. It certainly is a good retirement piece. It's a motivation for people to continue to be employees of the district. But that age is changing from 55 to 60. So there's a little bit of a change there with that. And that's across for the retirement. The 403B match, the changes there. For secretaries, you'll see underneath the eligible employees shall notify the school district in writing. All of that information is new. It's not different from what we do in terms of how we operate. But again, it was information that employees should know, should have access to, and we didn't have it in the handbook. So we carried it over, put it in there. And again, it matches what's in the teachers, and it matches what we do as our process. So again, just trying to be more thorough and putting more information there for folks to know. So salaries, so what we ended up with through the conversations, the secretaries, the starting wage remains at $18, or is $18 an hour for '24, '25, and $1,850 for '25, '26. And before I talk about the salary increase, one of the main issues that we talked about was in the previous settlement, when we increased the starting wages to make sure that we could try to get folks in, that left some of the folks with experience not getting as much. And so you had this, you know, gap of people who have experienced getting paid more, new people. That shrunk considerably when the new starting wage was increased. So that was a piece that was tried to get addressed in this round, was how do we make sure that those folks with experience get a little more? And that was a strong feeling that we wanted to address. So with secretaries less than a year of service, 50 cents an hour increase, and the secretaries with more than a year of service, a dollar increase for '24, '25 with a cap of $27 an hour. Secretaries with a year or more of experience receive a dollar an hour increase for the '25, '26 year with a cap of 27. So again, just trying to keep into account how that fits with the goal of trying to accomplish, getting some of that closeness that had been accomplished by raising the starting salary to recognize those folks with experience. So for paraprofessionals, starting wage for '24, '25, $16 an hour, and $1,850 for the '25, '26. All paraprofessionals with less than five years' experience receive 50 cents an hour increase each year for '24, '25, '25, '26 with a cap of $24. And paraprofessionals with five or more a year receive a dollar an hour increase for both years, '24, '25, '25, '26. So again, the reason you see that 50 cents and a dollar was trying to accomplish that. So one of the things I want to do, just, I'll pause here, and I'll ask Roger and Stacy. Does that match what you had as an understanding, wages are what we were doing?
No.
Okay. Jake?
Yeah.
Okay. That was a piece that had come up in question today, and I appreciate people asking because if there's a feeling like, I'm not sure this is right, that's what we need to do. And then I cross-checked with Dan as well. So I just wanted to see if that was, where that was at. Because I think that's some of what we were having about questions of misunderstanding of like, is this what it is or not? And so I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I honor what we want to do and how it is. So if it needs to be corrected, need to be able to make that, so. Okay. As we go along, then we talk about longevity. Longevity is a piece that has not been in there before. And so longevity, we defined as years of service to the school district in that specific position group. And I'm going to just pause there for a second because that's a question as well, that longevity has come up. And this relates back to, I know, discussion that we had with teacher negotiations. But longevity being defined as in that specific position. In other words, if you worked in position A in the district and then switched to a different job, In other words, if you worked in position A in the district and then switched to a different job, you get years of service recognition when we say, thank you for your years of service, but not longevity within that position. So I just want to clarify because that was a question that also came up. I want to make sure that I'm defining that right in terms of what. Okay. So I, I think it's important to have the definitions out there and to make sure that it's there so folks know. And again, we haven't had this in the past, but I think it's good to put it in there so there's clarity that way. Years of service are defined as, because we had this question too. If I get hired in the fall or I get hired in December or January or March or whenever, when do I complete a year of service? And so we define that as being if, in a school year, if you start in the fall, obviously you get a full year of service. If you start in December, full year of service. If you start in January after that first school day when we come back from the holiday break, then that is not considered a year of service. So you can certainly argue over whether that's the right day or not, but at least you have a point that's defined that folks know. On one side, yes, it's a year of service. On the other side, no, it's not. And so we defined it that way. Longevity is paid in June at the completion of the year of service and it's a defined dollar amount for that year. So it's not cumulative and it does not get added on to the base pay. So for secretaries, at the paraprofessionals, you can see the years and the dollar amounts. They are different. The five to seven years for secretaries, paraprofessionals, seven to nine. So those were the amounts. For example, one of the things that I think is important is that with the longevity piece, as a secretary, with this longevity piece, that could equate out to a dollar 20 an hour raise both years. And that's more than has been done in the past, because I know I went back and looked over the past 10 years. So it's a significant piece and I think it's a good piece to add in there. So I know that it's, for some folks, they might look at that and think, well, that's a good thing. And some might look at that and say, well, that's not enough. And both is probably right based on how you look at it, so. But that's the impact of what it had. So that's the longevity piece. Compensation time. The emergency closing, again, this is like, like I explained a little bit ago with E S S T. So, and that's the part. And I totally understand why the feeling and the view would be, well, I'm losing three days because now you're saying that comes off my leave. The answer to that is yes. It is now part of leave. That's how that part works, so. But it's also going to cover more than just those three days. Breaks are there. Seniority list at the bottom, that's again, another piece that's not been in there in the past. So the district shall annually prepare a seniority list by name, date of hire, year of service. Again, within their particular group separated out for secretaries, paraprofessionals, and provide that list via email to classified staff by October 1st. And obviously, the idea with that would be that if somebody says, hey, that's not the right information, they get an opportunity to get it corrected. So that's the piece within that. That would be used to offer summer employment opportunities because with the addition now of eligibility for unemployment during the summer for both paraprofessionals and secretaries and the opportunity to collect unemployment, then we need to make sure that we have a seniority list to offer summer employment opportunities. We would use that list for doing that. So anything I missed? Questions or clarification?
So we can entertain a motion to approve the classified salary and benefits handbook?
No.
Motion by Stacy?
Second.
Second by Roger. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Renewal of food service management contract.
So this is for next year. Again, working with Tahoe and what we do with that. So that's the information there. I should just scroll back up. It just caught my attention, 23. Oh, the original contract. I did the same thing there for a second. I was like, wait a second, did I miss that? Okay, so that was the original.
Yeah, because we can.
For '24 or '25, yes.
Every five years by state statute, but we can choose to go up, stay with the same one and that's with them.
If you're good with that and do that, then forward with the food service contract.
Who to approve? Who's by Monica?
No.
Second by Jake. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Well, you might want to build a board work session date.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was last night. Yeah. A board work session date to discuss the superintendent's search. Anybody have any thoughts on this, at least for now?
I don't know. I've been going back and forth on it. You know, it's awful late than what we normally would like on it. And not saying we can't get good candidates to do it either. My concern is if we do something with MSBA, which boy, I think we'd want to work with to try and help us with candidates on it. If we don't like the candidates or we don't get many this spring, now we come again next year and start it over, are we getting charged by MSBA twice on that? You know what I mean? That's.
I think in MSBA's policy is if they don't complete the search and that.
Then we don't. Does that make me feel better on that if that's more what we're going to do it? And not saying we can't, you know, find the time to get a candidate.
Right. And I think we need to look at other avenues other than MSBA for the search. You know, like Dave Thompson, he does that also.
Yeah.
Kind of way. But I'm, I'm kind of with you. I, as of right now, I'm thinking we're going out searching.
Yeah, I mean, it would be something to see who we get to, who applies and try to see what it looks like.
I spoke with Steve Zalee, the executive director for Southeast Service Co-op, and he has a good sense of who's out there as far as candidates. He does feel like we would get a pretty good candidate for him based on what he is aware of.
And I can tell you, there were a couple more that came just last week, a new posting that we just created. So I mean, it is still happening. I again wish that I could have moved this along a little quicker for you folks, but. The way it goes, it's the way it goes, yeah.
I was going to ask if we could set a work session for this, this week, yeah, like on Thursday? I think that's a great idea. I've got the Wabash County Integrated Children's Mental Health Governing Board meeting at 5:00, but I'd be done probably by 6:00. What, 6:30? Okay. Or are you? Or is there other question? No, that'd be fine. Okay. 6:30, 6:30 on Thursday?
Well, there's some things that I can help you with or gather, get gathered up for you for that. Are there things that you think of now, you know, I'd like to see this or that? Marsha and I did grab the previous posting and went through that a little bit already. They hear the pieces, know we need to update. So there, I could tell you already that we could send that out, right? And you could see that, have access to that. We could look at that in preparation for Thursday, especially if there's anything you want to change and handle file.
Yeah, I think that's what's coming out.
Would you like to check out MSBA to see if they have any plans to join for that workshop? I'm just off.
Maybe we should just kind of brainstorm and see which direction we want to go first.
Sure.
Yeah, we'd be able to talk about it.
Is there's anything else that I could do to help you?
Okay.
On the subject of Dave Thompson, I know that Zabroda and Mizepha is doing their strategic planning and they're using Dave Thompson right now and they're very happy with him. So when it comes to that point in time, that's just something to be aware of. They're using him right now to do their strategic planning and they've been very happy with the work that he's done.
I had a conversation with him a week and a half ago. More than happy, you know, if anything, we need to think of that we brainstorm with him, you know. So, I mean, nothing against MSBA, but I'm just curious, he uses the company then to get that out there? But I mean, you know, if it comes down to dollars itself, most cheaper.
I can just say, I've been through this process with the facilitator and we did it once without. And I highly recommend we use someone to help with the process because when we did it without, it was a lot more work for Ms. Marsha there. It just, it, it is, it's a, it's a heavy burden. And I just felt it goes, it goes better when you have someone that can help with all that, the process and the deadlines and when you have to have everything done. It is so nice to have somebody do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Very good.
Very good.
Well, thank you. I, I've appreciated working with all of you. Appreciate working with the staff. So I'll say thank you to that. Good experience.
Well, our solar presenters.
Well, we could do board comments.
Can I do more comments?
I just would like us to set up a policy meeting and work on, I think I've got a list of like, policies they'd like us to go through. And I'd love to get that done so we can do a first reading in May. I don't know if that's possible. Yeah, I think we could get some of them. And then the other thing that I would like us to set up, our MSHSL committee for our winter sports. And then I would like to have, I would like to see all the evaluations. I would like to be able to read all evaluations. Just for my own, just to see how everything went and what, you know, like student experiences and coaches' experiences and that kind of thing. I don't know if April is still an option for that as well. I don't know. You got?
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Yes, the policy committee, though, we did talk, we did all of those so quickly, but we said we'd circle back to someone else who we should have.
I've got another set of them that.
Is ready.
Is ready. Is ready for that. One and, one and done.
This is a 400.
I don't even remember. Just maybe it's a, I think it's a mix of a bunch of, yeah.
Just to spell out statute instead of having.
Yeah, basically. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and our goal in terms of negotiations that we have left, goal there is to get those done. Hopefully we can get those passed on. Still plenty to do.
So what do we have left for negotiation? Principles?
Principles and individual contract.
Okay. We have an ETA on our guests?
I was just looking. Checking.
The door should still be open, so we should be able to get in.
Yeah, great.
That lock is working.
Yeah, I know.
Is it fixed now?
Well, I couldn't get in this morning or this afternoon.
We don't have any message. Did you get the TV?
Stacy, did you check with Dave Thompson before Thursday's work session?
Yeah.
Some things, I'm calling that.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to kind of have that.
Yeah, yeah.
What things are and some of that stuff.
Yeah, you can tell where you are on that. How are you? Are you close to us? It's perfect. We're finished up, so we'll just wait for.
Okay.
You've got one.
Thank you.
All right. About eight minutes.
Yeah?
Great. So. And catch. Motion. Yeah.
Monica? Monica again.
Yeah, the range is far. It's become out of 2016. And they're nine more. I like.
You know, I was on a plane a little bit. I was about to get the. The teacher's been a little bit.
Yeah.
So. I would wish that Monica, anyone to be involved in that, so. You want to give a little bit, I think it's a lot to enter, you know, so much surprise for me. But guests are coming, so good. First, I'm not decent.
Post-travel. Yeah. Yeah, so they were on a spring break all the time. So they had like, you know, optional, friends, just what they do, they went. Like it's like. So they would've been inside. We're supposed to go to the cast. Weathering. And it's supposed to be like this, you know, the chandelier.
Yeah. We had those really nice days.
And every spring coach kicks me and everyone. Look at the weather. Everybody outside right away. April came in. This is just crazy. The girls are taking this. Shut down the sign machines. It's like a six feet. Sign up the track. This boy's had 100.
Yes.
I don't like five athletes named. And they're my jumpers.
The rest of my.
The rest of them's like, hey, you. Right? Everybody needs doors of these. But it is, yeah, it's just. So we pulled from. Middle schools, you know. Yeah. They're all, you know.
Yeah, I was just. Saturday. They said it was. Fifty-three. It did not feel like that. It was pretty interesting here. We were trying to stop that fool and.
It is.
It actually made seven people feel like bitch.
Right. Ghost hug guy came into the shop today. Got in the conversation somewhere. Sue and I are flying over Boise. Beginning of the night, some golfers.
Yep.
This guy's like, I lived in Boise for four years. Have center runs it over there. And then like there, middle of the day, so last time. Second last night we were out there, it's my brother and sister. And a bunch of football game, ninety-five degrees outside, all day. Then you go to the football game, sun puts shine, rest of the day. Sun goes down. And we have plum and twigs. I'm wearing shorts, kind of like a lightweight hoodie. Like middle of the third quarter, I'm like, am I worth it? I can't.
Gonna bring a bag of lights on.
Yeah. Okay.
You will be.
Right, so that would say golf bad, now just hit your master, make it to HP right away. Right. I mean, even though it's a change, it doesn't. Even just like going six, eight months. This guy, like, my God, it's. Twenty-seven, I think was breaking point, like. It just, I got it. Everything during my conversation today.
Yeah, it's.
I didn't sign up for that. What did she mean?
Pneusiology with a minor on one of its biology.
I was gonna say, I mean, she did go on a med school.
Yeah, no, that was.
Nelson? Took that staff. I don't know what his undergrad was, you know, something along those lines. And that's, yeah, by the time he had played, he got accepted to lunch. I think that's a special girl. And I, so that was like a year and a half, like straight on. Like eighteen months old. I think he got tired of.
I hope we had some good candidates on this spring.
We should actually shadow a couple of them before they need surgeries, like Gibson, he is. And she always puts her. So an orthopedic surgery. Yeah. Tambrano.
Yeah.
The doctors are wearing boots. Radios.
I do. I'm all. Right. What I heard about it, too big.
So she'll be.
If we spread these things out.
She'll come home and that probably.
Yeah. Right. Two. I mean, I know when I was talking to Nelson, that year, obviously, he liked donuts too. Undergrad to the masters, you know, that was like seasons there. He said, I don't look like ten years. You know, so like for him, I think he's the youngest that has been in his core or dressed up by twelve or thirteen years. Those are pretty, I think the next youngest.
They're right.
Right, and so they're looking at a deadline. Why, why did we use this? Yeah. Pretty acceptable position at the University of Southern Alabama. I don't really. Here's one. Colorado. Well, voice in it, but it creates twelve. It's true. Yeah.
But we have to get together, I mean, we have to get together really relatively small.
And we're smaller than like ten hours. But hopefully in the USA, I think we should get candidates up. Yeah, I appreciate what you're doing. So it'll be interesting. I still think more. Like, I was talking to him a bit. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll fly out for the graduation. July. I think this is where I want to.
Yeah. I. I will go.
I didn't. Yeah. Here's some of my names. That's a very healthy way. Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brad Blom.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate your guys' patience, we were coming from.
Yeah, thank you very much. Rich Raggett's and Darren Dufrain from Ideal Energies. I'm one of the founders of the company. We started it back in 2010. Since 2010, we've drawn out half of all the commercial onsite solar that's been done in the state behind the meter. And we've done 200 school projects to date. And in this solar for schools program, in the first quarter, we have 114 projects. So hopefully we know a little bit about doing solar with schools and here to kind of go through some of the details. I guess I'll step up here.
And this is to finish off the entire district. We did two prior schools. This would be the last two.
So, let's see here. Just kind of going through like page four shows a list of some of our customers. Onto the next page, the five. You guys, I think participated in round two.
Round?
Two. Okay. And so this is round four that we're talking about. And we got funds that are reserved for another two projects. And I'll go to show you what it looks like on the junior high school. We're talking about a 59.5 kilowatt DC size system on a couple roof sections there. And then also have one on the high school here, which is the 59.5 kilowatt. And we're talking about, it's about 4,000 square feet of footprint of roof that we're talking about for the solar. And it's a self-balanced system that just sits up on top of the roof membrane. There's no punctures to the membrane. If you have a roof warranty, we'll make sure that it's not voided as part of the construction. We do certain things like slip sheets and other things to match up with the roof surface to make sure that it's protected.
Could you answer, this question may come up, 59.5 is a specific number. Why that number and not 60 or 75 or what can you? I know that just might be a question that may come up, and I know that.
Yeah, so you can't, we have, I think we're using 460, 465 watt panels. And you can't use a half panel. So sometimes adding it up to ends up being like a, you know, 59.5 or. We did, I think, another one is 59.5 for, for a previous program. Just depends on the panel size that we want it to be. You can't, we have to follow the net metering laws so that you can't go over 40 kilowatts EDP. Otherwise, then they don't give you the retail benefit of the power that's sent back to the grid. They give you a wholesale, they, well, so we try and maximize within the construction title we're doing so that you guys have maximum production. And so this is what we think makes the most sense. Good question. Okay, so then on to the first one, which is the annual energy expense savings summary. So we're showing from left to right, this will create $5,292 worth of energy savings year one. We're gonna pay you rent revenue of $50. This is so we can get up there and operate and maintain the system during the payback. And so you have total revenue of $5,342. This middle payment here is payment to our company because we paid for the system and put it in and maintain it. So you're paying a discount on the energy that you would have been paying utility anyways. This next column here, the insurance, that's a rider you need to get on your insurance policy that won't cost you more than $100 a million. The total expenses of $2,778. So the second to last column is where you're at each year. So year one, you're gonna have a savings of $2,564. And you can see that over the life of the system, we're talking about $264,000 worth of electrical savings. And that's for one project. If you turn to the next page, it'll show you what we're talking about for both projects. Both projects, you're looking at about $529,000 of electrical savings over the life of the system. And these solar panels have a 30-year warranty with them. There's no moving parts. They're self-cleaning. You don't need to get up there during a snowstorm and brush them off. If you did, it'll create energy quicker than if it just melts off. But we factor that into our projections so that you don't have to do that. We, that's kind of a funny way of thinking, just put it up there and it'll create it. And then on to applying for the grant. We obviously applied. We got funds reserved for this. And the next date that's coming up is June 7th. That's when we have to do a full grant application where you have to come out and do a structural report, a one-line diagram, some things that we have to do to get interconnection with the local utility. And we'd love to get your approval tonight so that we can kind of start spending more money to make these projects come together. And one of the other things we do is provide educational materials that can be incorporated into the classroom. We have a fifth and sixth grade kind of science curriculum that's part of this. And we also have an 11th and 12th grade kind of pathways program. So if the kids aren't wanting to go to college, find out some other avenues to do things after they graduate. And those are up to the three current learning standards in the state. And so the next page here kind of how we put this together. You guys own the system day one. There's no upfront cost to you. We monetize all the different things behind the scenes to pay for the system. We operate and maintain it. Your only obligation is to pay that discount on the energy during the 20-year timeframe. After 20 years, you get free energy and we operate and maintain it. I kind of touched on this curriculum again. Here's the learning standard. Here it is. And the other thing is we provide a monitoring package as part of this. So you can have it on screen in the lobby, your website, even on your phone to the solar. It'll show you what's being created daily, monthly, annually. There's some feel-good stuff here that kids can learn about, like how much CO2 emissions we're saving, the equivalent trees planted, some things like that. And that's kind of basically what we have. We want to start to come out and do all those other detailed things to get you into the kind of final grant application stage. We want you to get your approval.
Yeah, we already did the. We already did electrical. And structural, Alice started working on that right now, based on the plan that we've covered.
What, what do we, what happens after the 20 years then? Does Ideal monitor? Is it? Are you up with it for the next 20 years or what?
You can, yeah, in fact, I didn't touch on that. I should have. In the, that detailed single cash flow summary that I showed you. If you look after year 20, in the middle column, insurance maintenance, expense and utility fees, it goes from 146 to 1561. That, that's if you wanted us to continue to operate and maintain it, that would be the cost to do that. But you can see in year 20, you're looking at about, you know, 8,000 worth of energy value. So that's something you guys can choose to do or not to do.
And this would finish off. This would be the junior and high school.
So you, I'm new to all this. So you've been in this 13 years?
14 years.
14 years. And you've never had to replace solar panels, like they're all up and running? So you're saying the life of your panels is gonna be over?
Yeah, there's a 30-year warranty with the panels that we're talking about. These are some of the highest quality panels in the world. They're tier, a tier-one manufacturer, so they're, we're operating and maintaining, you know, a couple hundred systems across the state. So we want to make sure we have the best quality products. So yeah, they have, they'll ask, they even have a production warranty that the manufacturer promises after 30 years that your system will still be producing 85% of what they promised you day one. There's degradation, so there's 72 solar cells in a panel. And there's silicon that connects the solar cells together. When that's exposed to mother nature, that breaks down a little bit. So you have a 2% degradation year one and then 0.45% every year thereafter. But after 30 years, it's still producing 85% of what the, did day one. But you still have a lot of useful life even after 30 years. We have these systems, these systems in place currently. Are they performing well?
Yeah, I couldn't quote anything necessarily off the top of my head. We could certainly have Trevor come and speak to that. Could even maybe show you the app. But it's. Interact. So you have holiday been performing for us?
Yeah, we've been maintaining them in the state. Yeah. The output is equal to what you. Mode that's it would be. Yeah. Get it on. One year? Four years? One year?
Round four, six building, has the curriculum that they have been used?
Fifty is a good example, yes. Yeah, so. What is it again? Pre-teen, three. Yeah. Yeah, and at this time, her commitment really is more with the steps in this. Steps I go through, so that's the item. Take the next step. The next deadline date. There's no action. Just approve that you're willing to partner with this next step. I will go no further.
Roger. One second. Monica, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Roll call? Oh, did you say aye?
I'm opposed.
Okay, that's why I say roll call then.
So it's not questions that you have necessarily?
That's correct.
Okay. I was gonna say, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
No.
Just checking.
Julie LeBeur? Yes. Monica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Julie Hurd?
No.
Stacy?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Very much, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. Ah, well, with that, the last, I have a second. Okay. Well, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need done.